Hello, this is Court Manischmidt.
Hi Court, it's Krista, I hear you.
Okay, great, just wanted to make-
Loud and clear.
Hi, this is Wayne.
Hi Wayne, I hear you.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning, this is Susan Buchanan, can you hear me?
Good morning Susan, I hear you.
Good morning.
Hello, this is Jeff, anybody on the line?
Hi Jeff, Kurt's here.
Hey Kurt, any other commissioners? We'll do a roll call, write a ten for everyone, just wanted to make sure I had my phone up and working. Krista, are you on the line? Alright, I'll be back in about a minute to start the meeting.
President Klein, I'm here.
Oh, good, good to hear, how you doing today?
Good, thank you.
Good, good, in about a minute we'll get started with the roll call of the commissioners, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Does everybody have their phone off of mute, commissioners?
Hello, this is Wayne.
Hey Wayne, good morning, any other commissioners checking in? Randy, are you there, Terry, Court?
At least for me, at le- at least there was an update to Zoom, and so they may have trouble finding where all the new buttons are located.
Yeah, I hit, I had to hit star six to be unmuted, thanks for that tip.
Can you hear me?
Okay, I got Wayne, who's that?
Jeff, yeah, this is Court Manischmidt.
I'm, I'm here Jeff, Randy.
Hey Randy, who else? Terry, you there? Hey Court, are you with us?
Yes, I'm, this is Court, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you Court, okay, I guess we're just wait- Okay, we're waiting on Terry, I think Kirk and Krista have already checked in prior to maybe you hearing that. And um, we'll give Terry another minute and then we'll open up the meeting, is that okay everybody?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, be sure to have your phone muted when you're not speaking.
Good morning Commissioner Klein, this is Sarah Greaves, can you hear me?
Thank you Sarah, I got you.
Thank you.
Hey Jeff, this is Wayne, in case Terry can hear, I had this problem the other day with a- Services Board meeting, what was that number you had to dial to be heard?
Okay, the number that I had, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And then there's an ID number I used, nine three, well, yeah, nine three eight, eight two oh eight, seven nine seven six. And the password for this public meeting is six one zero, three eight six.
And then you had to hit a spot-
That's what I got Jeff.
And another number to-
That's, well they recommended if it didn't unmute it hit star six.
Star six.
And I unmuted my phone, yeah, because I had a little trouble getting on today and I had to read through all the emails to make sure I had an accurate number. Terry, have you joined us yet?
Hey Jeff, it's Randy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got Randy, got you.
Alright, cool, see ya.
Um, hey Wayne, did you want to call Terry to see where he's at on that, or what would you like to do?
Well, I sent him a text message that if he can't be heard dial star six.
Okay, alright, we'll give you, we'll wait another minute or so to make sure we have him included.
Hey Jeff, this is PR, Danielle just called Terry and he's working on getting in right now.
Oh, good, thanks for the update, I appreciate that. Commissioner Baker, do we have you yet? For the public who's joining in, we'll begin momentarily, we're waiting on Mr. Baker to officially sign in and include him in the meeting, so I ask for your patience, thank you.
Hello?
Hey, welcome Commissioner Baker, thanks for checking in.
Yeah, this, it wasn't easy this time.
Yeah, I had some problems logging into, so I understand, so if all the commissioners have all, we did a roll call, other commissioners Kirk, Kirk Downey and Krista are with us, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I'd like to begin with Commissioner comments, and, and Vice President Baker, would you start with your comments, please?
Uh, just again, like to thank staff and everybody involved in keeping us safe here in Washington County and uh, just hope they're safe as well, so that concludes my comment.
Thank you Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Kiefer, would you like to have any comments?
Yes, I have two comments, um, my first comment is, I see we just received an email from the Board of Education, um, President Melissa Williams, and it looks like she may be requesting a, a joint meeting between our two bodies to discuss the budget. And I know our budget's very tight, but just, so we can make sure that communication is as open as possible during this time with, um, the schools being closed and our offices, you know, working remotely in many ways and having to conduct meetings through teleconferencing like this. I'd like to see if maybe we can accommodate that request, um, to have a joint sort of event.
Yeah, we'll cer- we'll certainly work on that, thanks for that recommendation.
My second comment is, I have an idea, um, I'm not looking for approval today from the commissioners, just maybe a, a general consensus or a green light to discuss this a little further with some folks. I was approached about a year ago about the idea of honoring the 100th anniversary of when, um, businessman Thomas Edison, Henry Ford and Harvey Firestone met at Camp Harding in the Pecktonville area of Washington County. I was approached last year by former Commissioner Ron Bowers who had an idea of maybe commemorating that from a historical perspective. And, um, the idea, I've been tossing around the idea myself lately with some members of the business community, I actually spoke with, um, the President of the Chamber Commerce, Paul Fry, this morning. About doing just that, having a 100-year anniversary celebration of when those businessmen met in Washington County. Um, and maybe have a discussion or a symposium, a speaker panel, kind of aimed at around innovation, because their conversations were often about innovation and ways to do business better. And certainly we're seeing a lot of innovation coming about necessarily because of the coronavirus pandemic, businesses being closed. Unfortunately, the reality is many businesses won't be open next year during this time that, that were open before the pandemic. So I'd just like to see if maybe there's a general consensus, if, if there's, if we like that idea of having an event next year, it would be in July of 2021 to commemorate the 100-year, um, meeting that took place in Washington County to talk about innovation. Um, and the early 20th century, let's do the same thing now, talk about innovation for our businesses, maybe we can invite some outside guest speakers, we can incorporate some history into that as well. Um, I would just like to maybe get that conversation started to present the commissioners as an agenda item, what that might look like for approval at that time.
Well, uh, thank you Wayne, that's a good suggestion, let's get Danielle and PR start working on that and see what we can formulate, and then put a R F out and have it come before us for discussion, how's that sound commissioners, everybody okay with that?
I would like to be a part of that if another commissioner would as well, the Chamber Commerce, I've spoken to some people, PR, I spoke to our Business Development Department about it prior to the coronavirus, um, so that-
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that, I'll have no opposition, commissioners, what's your thoughts?
I'm, I'm fine with that one.
I think it's fine, yeah.
Yeah, it's okay, alright, thank you Wayne, anything else?
That's all from me.
Alright, uh, Court, any comments?
Um, I just want to thank Delegate Wyble, uh, for yesterday, uh, reaching out to us and reaching out to the Governor on how we can start, uh, opening up our economy again in a slow and safe pattern. Um, I know a lot of people in the business community and individuals have been contacting me trying to figure out what's the next step and where are we going to move to. Um, and I think that we need to start talking about that, how we can, uh, open slowly and safely, um, you know, parks, hiking trails, golf courses. Um, and I also think we need to, um, look at the summer, we've got a lot of camps in Washington County. That, um, if we're trying to open up the, the economy, we're gonna have, need a place for these kids to go, and the camps are, they've got to start doing the hiring and start scheduling, it's not like they can just turn on a switch and take in all these kids the very next day. So it's something that we need to give our, our business community a little heads up and say, hey, this is what our plan is, and talk to the Governor and our delegation about that, so. Um, I also think that, um, the commissioner meetings and the shorter term, we should start looking at having in-person meetings again.
Right, Court, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Wagner?
Actually, um, on my comments, I have a couple, uh, actually Court, uh, I agree pretty much 100% with Court just said, one of my comments was, I, I think we should, uh, start with, uh, some open meetings. There's five of us, we have a five or 600 square foot room over there, I think we could spread out pretty good, do 20 feet of peat apart if we had to. Um, so I think that's something we, we look at and, and work on, or the employees are working. Um, so I think maybe, uh, it's time for us to, uh, be, get out, get out and, uh, do some thought process on these open meetings. Uh, also, uh, I do agree with Court, what he said, a, a slow stabilized, uh, opening, uh, we don't have a whole lot to say about that now, but I, I think the delegation's working on that. Um, being as we're sandwiched in between, uh, Pennsylvania and West Virginia, uh, and they're both starting to loosen up a little, it looks like. But anyway, with that being said, I also think, uh, I sent an email out last week, I didn't get any response from them, I don't think anybody, that I would like to, uh, possibly suspend this county administrator search for, until at least we get through our budget, we get through the COVID-19. Uh, at least for now we get through it, I think it, it's, uh, not the best time in the world, it's been, already been two or three months, we haven't moved at all on it. And, uh, I think, you know, maybe part of our applicants aren't even, uh, interested anymore. I think we need to start a new, uh, start the process over again, I would say maybe a deadline of July 1st or so and see what it looks like by then. But, uh, I just don't see how we can pick up after three months and, that information's old now, we don't know who's involved, uh, we're, don't want, I personally wouldn't want to bring a new administrator in right now in the middle of a budget and, uh, COVID-19. When we got a pretty good, uh, momentum going on both, I mean, the, the staff, the COVID joint team, the EOC, PR team, all the staff here. I mean, we got it running pretty smooth, I think, in cooperation with Merediths and all the other agencies, I, I would, uh, hate to break that momentum, uh, I think everybody's doing a- I, I would hate to break that momentum. I think everybody's doing a really good job. So that's, that's all I got, Jeff.
All right, thank you, Randy. I have a few comments as well. I, I personally believe we should be reviewing a regional opening of businesses in Washington County with all the necessary safety precautions for the business people and their customers and the citizens. I'd like to see the governor review Western Maryland and with our results not as bad as those in the center of Maryland, so I'd like to see that, look at. Also, later in our agenda, we're gonna have a discussion about the low SAP points. I've had a half a dozen or more conversations with people about that, and I'm gonna strongly recommend later for us to accept that. Yesterday, I, I joined in on the conference call that the chamber had with Secretary of Commerce Kelly Schultz and the delegation. Thanks to Secretary Schultz and the delegation for all the hard work this past year. And then one last thing, I did attend the moment of gratitude out at Merediths, where the nurses all at the hospital came out, were honored by some of the emergency responders. Comments from the nurses where they were, they were honored and privileged to be recognized like that. So with that being said, I'm going to...
Hey Jeff, can this, Randy, can I say one more thing?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to just thank, congratulate Christine Hurley, the Teacher of the Year. I watched that on Facebook. It was, they did a pretty nice job of doing that. So with social distancing, so I wanted to congratulate Christine Hurley.
Very good. With that, I'd like to move forward to reports from county staff. For those not talking, be sure to mute your phone. Staff, please introduce yourself and the subject. Who's up first? Any staff out there wanting to comment? Okay, not hearing any. County Administrator, Attorney Kirk Downey, do you have comments?
I just wanna thank the commissioners for their support of staff as we move through this. It, it is appreciated, and it's also appreciated that you recognize that your staff is competent and committed and that you've given us a space to do what we need to do to respond to this changing environment. So thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else, Kirk?
That's it.
All right, Krista on the line, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Hearing any, no more staff out there wanting to comment? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the next agenda item. It's a proclamation for COVID-19 Public and Health and Safety Heroes Week from May 3rd through the 9th. Of course, we're restricted by some social distancing rules not to present the proclamation in person. We'll have arrangements later in the future when we can do that. But if the commissioners would allow me, I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation out loud for the record. So here we go. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognize the doctors, nurses, and healthcare professionals for diligently serving patients affected by COVID-19. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognizes first responders who continue serving the community at the highest capacity to ensure all citizens remain safe. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognize all essential workers who provide necessary resources and programs to our community. And whereas the commitment to fight the COVID-19 global pandemic together with the state of Maryland. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through May 9th, 2020 as COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Heroes Week. The Board of County Commissioners encourage all residents to observe this occasion by showing their support for their local heroes by joining in a parade on Saturday, May 9th, where we show honor by waving from the stoop of our homes and from our porches as we display support to our public heroes while being alone together in Washington County. Again, my personal thanks and gratitude to our public health and safety officials. Commissioners who are listening, would anyone you like to comment on this subject? Okay, hearing none, we will now move to fiscal year 2021 Appalachian Regional Commission, Susan Buchanan, are you there?
Good morning, President Klein.
Good morning. Take it away. Introduce the subject and your name.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Susan Buchanan, Director, Office of Grant Management. I am presenting the FY21 Appalachian Regional Commission Preliminary Rankings for Approval Today and then also for permission to submit any county projects, the grant applications, and accept those funds as they would be awarded. As part of the annual A R C Funding Program, Tri-County Council for Western Maryland, the local administrator of the federal funds, requests that the county review and prioritize projects submitted for grant funding each year. A review committee consisting of the interim county administrator and directors from offices of planning and zoning, business development, grant management, and engineering have reviewed the projects and assigned a preliminary ranking. The Board of County Commissioners has the final authority to review and rank proposals at your discretion prior to the submission to Tri-County Council. This year, A R C project description forms were distributed in February to all the municipalities, educational agencies, healthcare providers, and nonprofit agencies, inviting them to submit proposals. There are two categories of funding available. One is area development, which requires a 50-50 funding match. And then the other, local access road pot of money, requires no match. This year, the funding for the three Western Maryland counties eligible for A R C funding is approximately 1.5 million for area development and 2.5 million for local access projects. Funding requests for Washington County's area development projects include seven projects requesting $948,000, and four projects for roads requesting a little over $2.6 million for a total request of $3,558,000. If awarded by A R C, the projects submitted by Washington County will reduce the cost to the county to complete those projects. I will turn your attention to the attached fiscal year project ranking. Please make sure that you do have the fiscal year 21 projects in front, in front of you. This is the preliminary ranking that came out of the committee. As I stated earlier, this is for just a preliminary ranking. The commissioners can adjust this ranking as, as they choose to before the final submission. I'll just read over each of the ranked project. The top section only has the area development projects. The bottom has the road projects. The first ranked project is from Marquise County Public Schools for their expanding computational thinking program requesting $100,000. Second project is from the Ark of Washington County for computer lab and training room equipment requesting $19,000. The third project from Washington County Department of Public Works, Antietam Creek Water Trail Improvements requesting $74,000. Fourth, the Town of Boonsborough submitted a sludge de-watering facility project requesting $325,000. Fifth, Community Free Clinic for the Chronic Disease Management Program requesting $130,000. Two projects from the City of Heggers Town, number six is 170 West Washington Street Redevelopment requesting $50,000, and the Life Safety Code Upgrades Fund requesting $250,000. I also have provided call-in information to all the agencies submitting applications so they could join this call in case any of you would have any questions that I couldn't answer about their specific projects. Are there any questions about the area development projects before I move on to the local access road projects? Please, oh, go ahead.
This is, this is Court Malschmidt. On the Community Free Clinic, where it says other $325,000, is that other contingent on the whole thing being done?
The, the difference between the other and the local private funding listed, the local private funding is what the actual organization is budgeting towards the program. The other is they get it from other sources. I do not know of any of them being contingent on, but they are through other grant programs that they normally rely on for this program.
Yeah, cuz my question is, is if we're looking at that for an ARC funding of $130,000, giving up $325,000 would be significant.
Correct. And, and one thing to note, and I wanted to bring this out in the discussion anyway, the, the bottom three ranked projects in this category, the reason that they were ranked at that, at that part of the grouping was based upon eligibility issues with the A R C program that they would not receive grant funding if they moved forward based upon issues with the programs not meeting the requirements of A R C.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, this is Kirk. Just a caveat, as Susan said, that if a, a project ranked towards the bottom of the list, that doesn't necessarily mean that the committee thought that it was a bad project or unnecessary. It was just when considering the A R C eligibility requirements, if it didn't score very high on that criteria, obviously it couldn't be ranked any higher. But again, that does not mean that these projects are not worthwhile and worthy of pursuit.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
I, I just wanted to add on to what Kirk said. That is basically the, very, very well said as far as that what we looked at. We had to start with, the primary threshold was would this application get through the approval process? And then it was looked at, the ones that would, the ranking was based upon other factors as far as looking at, at the impact to the community.
Hey, this is Randy Wagner. Let's just example the Community Free Clinic, which everybody thinks is a great source. So from one of your emails, you did mention eligibility. Could, could the Community Free Clinic or City of Heggers Town, whoever on that bottom three, if they have some eligibility issues, would they be able to repair those eligibility issues? And, or, or is, is that they just lack enough of eligibility to be anywhere else? Is that pretty much what you're saying?
The, the two projects that were submitted from the City of Heggers Town, the, the problem with those projects was that both of those projects were to benefit a specific developer, whoever was going to be accessing those funds to do the development. And that is prohibited by the program, the A R C program for the area development program. So that would be very difficult for them to change.
Okay, gotcha. So then why are they even on the list, I guess is the question?
It's because it was submitted, and any, any project...
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Community Free Clinic, there is, there were some aspects that aren't, aren't fundable through. It's not a black and white issue as far as it's not, the whole thing not eligible. But there are major components that would not be fundable. They don't pay for salaries usually through A R C that would make it harder for them to be able to gain approval.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, Susan, proceed.
I'll move on with local access road projects. Number one on local access roads was the City of Heggers Town's Professional Court Widening Eastern Boulevard Improvements requesting $750,000. The second ranked project was Washington County's Right Road Extension Fees 2 requesting $1 million. The third project was the Town of Boonsborough's Schaefer Park Drive requesting $660,000. The fourth project, the City of Williamsport Road Overlay Project requesting $200,000 for a total of $2.6 million. Any questions about any of those projects?
Susan, I have an overall question.
Yes.
This is Washington County's preferred ranking list, correct?
This was... Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, then it's forwarded up to Tri-County Council, and they blend in Garrett and Algeny Counties' request into select the finalists. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Susan?
This is Kirk. I just added the same caveat as to the ranking applies to this group as well.
All right. Any other questions for Susan? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the preliminary project description as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the, oh, go ahead, Court.
I, I make the motion to accept the preliminary ranking of the Appalachian Regional Commission project.
All right, is there a second?
This is Wayne.
I second that, Jeff. Oh, go ahead, Wayne, I'm sorry.
Either one.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. This is Jeff.
Aye, Court Malschmidt.
Wayne, aye.
Anybody aye? Okay. Terry, can you hear us? Terry, you still with us? All right, not hearing from Terry at the moment. Commissioners, you okay with a 4-0 vote to approve? Hearing no objections, 4-0 to move forward with the presentation. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, reallocation of 2016 bonds. Sarah, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, here for you today to discuss the reallocation of 2016 bonds. Sometimes bonds can be issued and then not fully expended. And so what I'm here today is to request a budget adjustment to reallocate bonds that were issued in 2016 for Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant and reallocate those bonds to the Capacity Management Project. This realic, oh, this reallocation is in the amount of $316,618. Some of this reallocation is from unspent bond proceeds and others are, well, all of it's from unspent bond proceeds. Sorry, excuse me. The reallocation will reduce the future borrowing needs for the Capacity Management Project. The Capacity Management Project is estimated at $10.9 million. And one of the reasons for the bonds, for the reason for the bonds to have not been spent is because the county received more grant revenue than we had expected. And that grant revenue came in just recently in fiscal year 2020 for Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant. To give you a little bit more information, total cost of that project was $31.2 million, in which the county received $18.7 million in grant funds. So we did fare very well in grant funding for that project. So today, I'd like to ask you to move forward to approve the budget adjustment that is included to reallocate these bonds. Our Bond Council will move forward with a supplemental resolution and tax certificate. She will prepare that, but she needs the commissioner's approval to reallocate the bonds first.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Sarah, or I would entertain a motion to approve?
Court Malschmidt, I make the motion to approve.
Is there a second? Commissioners, is there a second to approve?
This is Randy, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none with Commissioners' vote, aye. What's her name? Jeff says aye.
Wayne, aye.
Court Malschmidt, aye.
Randy, aye.
Randy, Terry, are you still with us? We may have lost connection with Terry, so the motion passes 4 to 0. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next up, capital budget. Welcome back, Sarah.
Thank you, sir. Capital budget adjustment, Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer. Again, another budget adjustment request for your approval. As discussed last week, the county is taking a very lean budget approach to fiscal year 21, given the COVID-19 circumstance. In doing so, the general fund appropriation was reduced by $5 million for the FY21 projected capital budget. However, in the FY21 capital plan, there are still certain project needs that need to be funded. And we've identified some either savings or areas where we could reallocate funds and transfer those to reserves for the use of the fiscal year 21 plan. So this is just as a follow-up... this is just as a follow-up, this would be the, we would need to go ahead and move forward with this budget adjustment to move those funds into reserves for the use of the fiscal year 21 capital budget, there were eight projects that were identified in the existing capital budget that either have savings or that were otherwise delayed, so essentially all we're doing is reducing those budgets, moving the funds into reserve, and then for fiscal year 21, we'll pull the funds out of reserve to fund the capital projects that are identified in fiscal year 21 capital plan, and the total amount of this is $2,537,000.
Comments, questions? All right, hearing no comments or question, uh, questions, I need a motion to approve the adjustment as described. Do I have a motion to approve?
This is Wayne, I make the motion to approve.
Okay, Wayne-
I'll second.
Okay, Court, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, include your name, Jeff, aye.
Wayne, aye.
Randy, aye.
Court, aye.
Court, aye, Terry, have you been able to join back with us? A hearing, no response from Terry, we will approve 4-0, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda is our LoSAP update, Dell Fishack, President of Fire Association, and Dave Hayes, Director of Emergency Services, are you with us? Okay, looking for Dave Hayes or Dell Fishack.
Program says, Dave, you there?
Yeah, I'm here, yep, it just left me in.
Okay, is Dell joining you today as well?
He's supposed to be on.
Okay, um-
Looks like we got Terry, bud.
Okay, good.
Maybe just a reminder for anyone who needs to speak right now, hit star six on your phone to unmute.
Thank you. All right, Dell Fishack, are you with us, Dave Hayes?
Yep, Dave is here.
Okay, has Dell joined us yet? Dave, I'd like to wait, see if we get Dell online, if you know for sure he's tuning in, okay?
You wanna go to the next agenda item, come back to me after that, I'll get him.
Next agenda item is closed session item, so this is the last-
Got it.
I wanna, somebody wanna send Dell a, a text message, but I think Dave, you can probably proceed, maybe he'll join us, how's that sound?
Yeah, is there somebody here can send him a text, or you need me to do that?
Hey, buddy, got his, got his phone number? Dave, why don't you take a moment and send him that text, and then you can join in with making the presentation, okay?
Sure, give me one minute.
Sure, take your time.
President Klein just spoke to him, he's dialing in, he wasn't on ahead of schedule.
Okay, um, we'll wait till we hear his acknowledgement and then begin, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, we got Dell in, everybody listening?
Morning.
Jeff, this is Dell, I'm on now.
Well, I, welcome to the meeting, we're a couple minutes ahead of schedule, but, um, Dave Hayes and Dell, would you introduce yourself in the matter?
Yes, Dave Hayes, Director of Emergency Service, here to make a proposal to the Order of County Commissioners for a points modification for the calendar year 2020 for LoSAP.
Dell Fishack, President of Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association, and to shorten the phrase, I'm here for the same thing, Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we're here with a recommendation and looking for a motion to approve the point modification as presented by the President Fishack of the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association for LoSAP year 2020, the report in brief, the COVID-19 pandemic effects on Washington County continue to touch all areas of responsibility and operations within the county, volunteer fire and EMS departments rely heavily on annual fundraising efforts and the incomes that are generated by the same, with Governor Hogan's executive orders limiting social gatherings to 10 people or more, many departments have had to cancel or suspend fundraising activities since early March, discussion is as follows, with the cancellations and suspensions of most, if not all, volunteer fire and EMS department fundraisers, many of the non-operational volunteers have been significantly limited on their opportunity to learn, to earn the necessary LoSAP points for the calendar year 2020, several carnivals and larger events for the organizations have already been canceled, and several more are expected to be canceled in the near future, the contributions of the non-operational members to the financial well-being of the volunteer system is significant, it is paramount that we preserve where possible the enthusiasm of this group of volunteers to continue the great work they do, a decision by the B O C C to modify the current year LoSAP service points would add great value in recognizing and assisting this group in meeting their LoSAP point obligations for 2020, the fiscal impact, we have that listed, there's no significant consequences, but I might turn that over to the CFO, who's actually spoke to our actuary and has a better description of that, and I'll come back to that in just a second, but it has the concurrences of the Emergency Services Director, Chief Financial Officer, and as a secondary point, we actually put this up through HR, and I believe Director Brown has some comments, and she may be on the line as well, and then the alternatives are to not adopt the LoSAP proposal and continue with the current LoSAP procedures for fiscal, or calendar year 2020, and then you have two attachments, one is the letter from the association signed by the President, and then the actual proposal that's drafted as a second attachment, and I'm gonna turn this back to Sarah Greaves for a second, just to highlight a little bit more on the fiscal impact, and then we'll turn it over to President Fishack.
Good, Director Hayes, this is Court Malschmidt, I got a quick question before we hand that over.
Yes, sir.
How, on average, how many LoSAPs points does somebody earn in an administrator function a month?
Um, I'm probably gonna ask President Fishack to answer that, he's probably better positioned than I.
Court, it's Dell, that's gonna be a tough one to amterize out on a monthly basis, and the reason why I say that is, some months are gonna be a greater spike than others, give you for an example, if that administrative position was working the carnival events that many of the departments have and they cancel, there's potential in that month to gain probably 20, 25 points, maybe even more, depending on what their role was, i.e. if they may have been the carnival chairman, if they were that person that worked all day long, and then in the evenings did the event, then looking at the downside, the most minimal would maybe be the person in administrative role would have attended a company meeting, maybe the board meeting that month, and then a committee meeting or two that they participated in, that would be maybe four or five points for the month, and then, you know, if there'd be a fundraiser in that month, that would be a small fundraiser, say a Bonanza or something, they may get another point or two for the hours they exhaust, so, I know that's kind of a broad answer, but that's the best I can explain it, there'd be a high side and a low side, depending on which month that would occur in.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, are you on?
Good morning, Commissioners, yep, yep, sorry, I'm here, good morning, this is Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, just for your awareness, I mean, the financial impact of providing the same number of points for fiscal year 20 to those who received the points in fiscal year 19, the financial impact of that is difficult to quantify because there's so many variables assumed in the calculation that comes from the actuary, so, you know, in my discussion with him, basically, you know, the turnover of those volunteers who would not have otherwise continued to get the points, and the difference between those people and the oncoming volunteers is really your duplication of, of providing the points, so it would matter how many people were not going to get their points in fiscal year 20 that did in 2019, that would be the additional, when I asked him to help me to quantify that without a very direct calculation, because he could not provide that at the time, he said potentially tens of thousands in total, maybe 20 to 30,000 dollars in fiscal impact, now, again, that's all based on certain assumptions, he may have assumed that the turnover was 50 people a year, it may not be that, 75 people a year, so there are different factors that, that go into that, but all in all, the financial impact is difficult to quantify, certainly if the Commissioners weighted or gave a different amount of points other than 50, the financial impact would be less, so just for that information, do you have any questions for me related to my conversation with him?
No, this is Court Malschmidt again, I, I guess my concern with this is not the people that get the, the 50 points, but let's say we had somebody that was at 42 or 44 points last year, and this year, you know, they were really pushing to get it, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can look at giving them a, a certain amount of points for what they did last year, what they were working on this year, so that some of the people that were close have the ability to make it, instead of, you know, hey, you didn't, you didn't get it last year, you're not gonna get it this year, and hopefully things will be opening up towards the end of the year, that we have the ability for people that were close last year, if we give them some of the points, they'll be able to, you know, get it toward the end of this year.
Court, it's Dell Fishack, I think I can help answer that for you, so the look at what we're going to be doing would be just grandfathering those across that made those 50 points last year, however, the opportunity still exists this year to earn points, one of the things that they will have to do, and when we look at this, is there's two different systems here that we use these points to work for, one is the LoSAP program, and the other is the income tax modification program that's offered by the state, we cannot do anything with the income tax modification, so they're still gonna have to qualify for 50 points and try to earn that during this time, so if they work hard to achieve that, basically the grandfathering would be a wash for that individual, if you're following me, what, if, like, just if I was the person that was affected, I'm still gonna try to get to my 50 points, because I want also the income modification tax subtraction for the state, but if I don't make it because of COVID-related issues, then at least you're gonna grandfather and give me the credit on the LoSAP program locally, so there is an avenue for them to try to work and achieve that, I don't know how we go back and would grandfather or try to give them extra points, does that answer your question?
The, yes, it, it does, you know, I guess I was trying to find a way that a, a person that, you know, let's say got 40 points last year, and, you know, they were really gonna dedicate themselves this year to doing it, but I mean, if they're gonna, you know, that they would be able to get the LoSAP, and maybe they don't get their 50 points this year because of everything, so they don't get the tax modification, but they could have gotten the LoSAP if we gave them some points for what they, you know, traditionally do every year.
Hey Dell, oh, let me ask a question, sorry to interrupt, Court.
No, you're fine.
They, they track those points, so they kinda know where they're at at most time, is that correct?
Yes, there's a report posted, they know where they're at, those reports have to be posted quarterly, most are, most departments post them usually monthly, so each individual can access their report and know where they currently are.
Yeah, I guess what Court's trying to do is make sure we leave no one behind by not knowing where they're at, so that would allow people to know who are close to go to a meeting or whatever to get those extra points to qualify, would that be accurate?
Yes, and if, you know, and I, and I guess if there's somebody on a, a case by case that didn't make it last year, and they worked their tail off this year to get it, and because of COVID not, not being there, I, you know, if we could on a case by case approve those, I'd be, I'd be 100% comfortable.
Commissioners, Dave, I, I, one thing I wanna get on the record, I don't know, is Rachel Brown on the call?
Yes, Dave, I'm here, Rachel Brown, HR Director.
I just wanted to make sure we got your comments on the record here, and I can share them, or you certainly are willing to, are able to do that on your end.
And, thank you, Dave, I appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure that for any kind of adjustments or changes or considerations that we're making with the LoSAP plan, that we are going through the plan document language and using the Plan Committee, that's supposed to be reviewing any changes that are to be made, this helps to protect the plan, to make sure that there are no amendments or changes that could be contradictory to the plan, or that could be confusing in how it's applied in the future, that will make sure that we're consistently able to apply the benefits and that there's no inconsistencies, so I would just ask, anything that the Commissioners consider, that it would be reviewed back with the LoSAP Pension Plan Committee before anything becomes finalized?
I, 100, I 100% agree.
Is the fiscal year for these points a calendar year or a fiscal year for 2020?
Calendar.
Calendar, so people who were shy of 40 still have all the way into December to get their 50 points if they're short, would that be accurate?
Yeah, I think anybody would be in that same scenario regardless, you know, and there may be an opportunity here, I think, with what Commissioner Malschmidt had brought forward, if we could, you know, in lieu of approving this today, is to basically give a consenting position for this to go to the LoSAP Plan Committee to further explore some of the conversations that Commissioner Malschmidt is talking about, to see if there's other opportunities here to, to capture some of those scenarios, now that we have input from the Commissioners, it may help us, and we could push this back to the Plan Committee for a week or two weeks at the most, work on that, I don't know how President Fishack feels like that, but I understand where Commissioner Malschmidt's at, and I think there is opportunity to look at that particular scenario or those scenarios.
Hey, Davis, this is Randy and Dale.
Yes.
I, I, I guess maybe I, I missed something there, I understood what Court said, but I also heard that there would be plenty of opportunity for somebody that was close to, to still, if they wanted to do something, to get their, their, their LoSAP points, is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, I, what I had said is, is Randy, everybody would have that same scenario, so even the group that we're talking about that got 50 last year would have the same opportunity that somebody would have that was close last year to still get the 50, I'm not, I'm not saying not to do this, what I'm saying is, I don't think there's a difference in that group that didn't make 50 last year than the group that did make 50, they're both gonna have the same amount of opportunity from here on out to get the 50, so where Court is going, I think, is saying, well, that group that might have had 42 doesn't have the advantage of the missed opportunities either to make up that difference, I think I'm saying what Court might be talking about.
Yes, that's, that's completely, you know, if, if somebody got, in that example, President Fishack did, if somebody got 25 points on their, every year, last couple years on the carnival, and this year they don't get those 25 points, it's a completely different issue for them to get, to get it, so that's what I, I just wanna make sure that everyone's being, everyone's being looked at fairly.
Could I throw something out here, but I still think as- Could I throw something out here, but I still think, as I say this, I'm going to develop the opinion here today that we should throw this back to the LoSAP Plan Committee, because there'll be a different fiscal impact. But Court, I believe the easy way to get to the concerns, to answer the concerns that you've got, which I agree with, is basically, if you earned twenty-seven points last year, you get credited with twenty-seven points this year. If you earned fifty points last year, you're getting fifty points this year, and then everybody gets treated the same. But that's going to change the fiscal impact, I believe. And at that point, I would say it's best to send it back for a week, maybe two, to the Plan Committee. Let's make sure we dot our i's, cross our t's, and know exactly what we're speaking to with the impact.
Uh, and I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that the, the volunteers understand that this is, we're definitely going to do something, help everybody out. I just, I just don't want to miss anybody, and, um, because we, that, that's my big fear, I just don't want to miss anybody.
Well, that's where I think if we could just get, not necessarily consent, but, uh, but basically, your, your input to move forward through the LoSAP Plan Committee and develop maybe a more in-depth proposal that covers the other scenarios that may not get covered under just the fifty points, and bring that back, I think you, you send that message, and I certainly would carry that message, and I believe President Fishak would do the same. Dale, do you have any comment to that?
Uh, this is Terry speaking, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I'm, I would be okay with moving forward with what's being presented today, and then we can come back and, uh, go back to the committee, and then they could bring the adjustments back at a later date, a week or two. But for me, I'm okay with moving forward with what we have today.
Yeah, Commissioner Baker, I'm going to join you with that. I'd like to move forward today with that, and then send some of this back to that LoSAP Committee, if you suggest it for recommendations. Thank you.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what's going to work for me.
It makes sense to do that now, thank you.
This is, for I would agree approach, I'd like to give assurance to our volunteers that, you know, we're committed to helping them. This is through no fault of their own that not be able to meet LoSAP requirements, and let's, you know, over the next few weeks, um, get the fine details ready, that's fine.
All right, any other Commissioner comments? Um, if not, is there a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make the, Terry, I'll make the motion to approve as presented with, uh, Court's concerns coming back at a later date.
To the committee, okay, I'm back. Okay, is there a second? Wait that motion's phrased?
This is Court Mina Schmidt, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and a second?
And I just want to make sure we take in.
Let me, let me, hold on a second, we have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Court, please proceed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, um, when we take this back to the committee, we're looking at the plan documents as, uh, recommended by Director Brown.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any other conversation? If not, all those in favor by name, say aye. Jeff, aye?
Terry, aye, and thank you, Court, for, uh, bringing forward, uh, your concerns, because they're extremely important as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. All right, uh, who else?
Wayne, aye.
Okay, Randy, aye. Court, did you say aye?
Yes, Court Mina Schmidt, aye.
And Wayne, I think yours was muffled a little. Are you okay?
Wayne, aye.
Okay, that's five-oh. Um, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, uh, Mr. Fishak and Mr. Hayes, appreciate it.
You're welcome. We'll be back in about two weeks, if all possible.
Okay. Commissioners, now I need, need a motion to go into closed session as presented detail?
Motion to go in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second, Court Mina Schmidt.
Okay, all in favor say aye, in your name. Jeff, aye?
Terry, aye.
Wayne, aye.
Court Mina Schmidt, aye.
Randy, aye.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, you have instructions on how to go to closed session. Thank you.